This meeting will come to order. Hammond City Council Public Hearing, August 13th, 2019. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales. Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Public hearing none. We'll go straight into our regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wales. Councilman DiViterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
I'll ask you all to stand for our prayer and ask Councilman Andrews to lead us in prayer.
Let's take a moment to pay honors to those that have lost their lives over the last week. Eternal Father, we thank you right now, give you glory and honor, and let it do your name. Thank you, Father God, that this is the day you've made we rejoice and we are glad about it. Father God, we thank you for your daughter and son who died upon the cross that we too would have access to the tree of life. Now, Father God, we thank you that everything will be done decent and all that pleasing in your sight when you would get the glory, honor, and praise for it all. Father God, we actually continue to bless our police department, our firemen, and they continue to protect and serve us in our city right now. Actually, continue to bless the council, continue to bless the administration right now, Father God, continue to give us the knowledge that we need to continue to lead our city in the best that you have set in place for us right now. For that, we give you honor and praise. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
For our pledge of allegiance, I'll ask all veterans and active military to please render the proper salute.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, for our reports. Council report, first, I'd like to recognize Judge Scott Schleifen. There he is, in the back. Twenty-fourth Judicial District Court in Jefferson Parish. I just wanted to tell you, thank you for coming to our council and, you know, showing interest in the city of Hammond. Very nice. Anyone else have a council report? All right. Mayor, anything to report to us?
If the council has checked their emails, you'll see that we have the June results of the sales tax. So, we ended the fiscal year at $158,000 in the black. So, we did very good this year. Yes, that's right. We're always worried about that concern. Also tonight, I met these two gentlemen a while back when they first moved into town. They do contracting of painting, but they also wanted to get involved in the community. They want to do some good things in our community. So, Mr. Stanley Lodegat with Real Talk Comedy Club, why don't you stand up for a second, take a couple of minutes, and tell us what you'd love to do here?
Hello, how y'all doing? My name is Stanley Lodegat. I live here in Hammond. Moved here about five years ago. We, myself and RJ, we run a comedy club. We actually have a residency over at the Nightcap, which is a business here in Hammond. We are in talks and getting to, with the school board here, Tantrum Parish School Board, to start bringing some comedy to these kids. I really do believe that if we can inject some humor and comedy into their lives where Lord knows things are so difficult for them, catch them early, start letting them know that it's okay to be different, it's okay to laugh at some things, it's okay to respect people's differences. And I think we can get to them more with this comedy thing than we could just patting them on the back and directing them to do something. You know, they're very, very impressionable, but if you press them too hard, they tend to go the other way. So, that is our mission, that is what this comedy club started about, and that's what we tend to bring to y'all community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. RJ, good luck with that. We could use some laughter.
Definitely can use laughter.
Thank you, Mayor. Are there any businesses in the audience that would like to be recognized? As to our minutes of July 23rd, 2019, need a motion, please?
I make a motion that we approve our minutes for our last council meeting.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolutions, old business, number one, a resolution to approve change order number one for canal improvements fiscal year 2019, adding $30,770.26 for pedestrian bridge extension, project number 420-11910. Web.
Chuck explained all this last meeting. It's been tabled, so we still recommend approval of the change order. Whatever questions you have.
Any questions from the council?
Again, this is all final quantities and then finishing fixing the bridge and then some extra work that we had to do on the Hazel Street Canal for around the tidal source.
Yeah, I have a question. Well, how many feet are they really adding on to this bridge from what y'all had at first, from the beginning?
Seventy feet.
You adding seventy feet?
That's that failure, the pictures that Chuck brought last time, the part that's all sloughed off, where the banks left off when the water got high, that's to get all the way past that.
So, to keep this from taking place again, what are y'all gonna do to keep this from happening again? First time I keep hearing about flood, that's what I heard the first time.
Right. Well, the conditions, the conditions when the bridge, when the bridge was, sidewalk and bridge were originally put in.
Uh-huh.
It didn't look like it does now. It's all sloughed off. When the water got up, everything sloughed off. We're going back and putting pylons where the sidewalk was.
And that gonna solve the problem till you're not?
Yes.
So, I think I'm gonna be here four more years, so I'm not gonna hear this here, we're not gonna go through this bridge again. And I'm gonna tell you why I'm saying this here. It's not about you, and it's not about Mr. Chuck, but Janice got the bridge done when she was in office. In less than two years, the bridge went out. And here it is. Now, we replacing the bridge again, but we adding on seventy feet. That was my biggest concern, why we adding on so many feet to the bridge? That was the biggest concern that I had, so.
The footing was in, right next to where the existing traffic bridge is.
Uh-huh.
Vehicular traffic. That footing, all that ground settled, I mean, you've seen it. All that ground settled back. So, we're going all the way past where all that ground has sloughed off. That's why we're going seventy feet. Three sets of pylons and two extra sections of the bridge.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Anyone from the audience on this matter? Pleasure with the council.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Wait, can I ask one more question?
Yes, go ahead.
Side question was, on Timber Lane, did you ever get a, an estimated kind of date, time, probably like a week?
The rain's gonna back them up again, but.
I mean, are they, you know, a couple of months down the road kind of deal, or are they going to Alida? I think they already worked.
Are you talking about, I'm sorry, there's two things on Timber Lane.
Yeah, Timber Lane.
The current drainage project.
Yes, yes, yes.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a couple of months before they're there.
Okay.
Before they're finished there.
Now, they're going to Alida, they're doing some work in Alida right now, okay.
And then they're going to Timber Lane.
Okay, all right. Sounds good.
And they're finishing up in Whitmore.
Good deal. Thank you.
And sorry, the JW Davis Bridge, will that be, that start soon?
Yeah, the contractor's finished with everything else. They're ready to go do it now.
It looks pretty bad, and it's obviously a safety hazard.
Yeah, they're ready.
I'm glad we're.
I mean, we have to get them fabricated once this is approved, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank y'all.
New business, number one, a resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to host and serve alcohol on Friday, September 27th, 2019, from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM for the 10th Annual Brew's Art Festival within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Streets and the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at 217 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Lacy.
Tonight, I'm here before you as the president of the Arts Center Board, not as the director of administration. We're seeking approval of our annual fundraiser. It is the 10th annual, so we're excited about that. Lots of beers and cheers over 10 years. And we will be carting just the same way that we have done in the past and using wristbands. We also have two police, one at the entrance and then one at the back entrance, just to ensure that nobody can kind of sneak into the event. So, this is very similar to the same event that was last night, last year, with both food and beer pairings.
Any questions from the council? Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure with the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Wales.
Yes.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Number two, a resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to obtain a waiver of the open container law on Friday, September 27th, 2019, from 4:00 PM until 10:00 PM for the 10th Annual Brew's Arts Festival within the boundaries of Morrison Alley Park between Cypress and Cherry Streets and the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at 217 East Thomas Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Lacy.
Same gig, this is just to have the waiver of the open container law.
Any questions from the council? Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure with the council.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Number three, a resolution supporting the submission of a $19,198 federal, I'm sorry, I said that very wrong. You get it. Federal Justice Assistance Grant application to purchase new and replacement tasers for the Hammond Police Department. Charles Borshers.
If you're wondering why this number is odd, it's because it's a direct allocation that we receive based on our crime statistics and demographics. Every year, we receive a direct allocation from the federal government. This is a different application from the one that was approved several weeks back. You approved a previous application through the state, same JAG program, but through the state. That's a competitive application, and that one's still in process. This is a direct allocation, and what we do with these is we go to the police chief and ask him where his priorities are. Replacing the tasers, adding new tasers is a priority. This will give us funding to add or replace by another 15.
Is there a match?
There is no match.
Any questions from the council?
Yeah, I have a question. I see we had a chief in here, and I had talked to the chief, let the chief come up and explain why he need tasers, 'cause he explained it to me, and I think it's a good idea why they are asking for tasers. You don't have none on you, huh?
Chief Edwin Berger on Hammond Police Department. Tasers, like most equipment, it has expiration dates, they get older. The companies do a miraculous job of having something work for a certain number of years, then they start upgrading their equipment, then they quit supporting the systems, and that's pretty much where we're at right now. Some of the tasers that we have, we've had, how long, Charles? Probably eight, probably eight, 10 years. And as they're getting outdated, we just can't fix them anymore. They have companies that are side companies that'll come in, if you send them a broken taser, they can kind of mix and match it, but we haven't found that that's really a positive way of doing that. The taser system itself, because of the upgrades, I think we're at an X26 plus, and the other ones were like X22s, so they're just not supporting it anymore. And as we keep hiring new people, which we, just to let you know, we're, I think it's eight new hires over the last five months, trying to fill back or backfill the ranks that we've lost. But as we keep hiring new people, we just have to get this equipment updated and make sure that they have the right equipment to do their job.
Does every officer have one on duty whenever he's on duty, the taser, or no?
We do not require them to carry a taser. Part of the taser program is you have to be tased in order to carry it. Some people have chose not to do that.
Yep.
So, we do have a couple that are not certified, but I would say probably 95% of the department are.
Do they have cameras on them?
Yeah, well, some of them do, some of them don't.
Do you have any cameras that you're gonna purchase?
I mean, we have any, I don't recall.
We have, it's like the specific.
We have the specific, I mean, it's the same model, but you can do the camera addition. The question is, I mean, we are pretty camered out, we have dash cameras, body cameras. Most tasers do have cameras on them. I know the jail tasers do not, because they have safety mechanisms to where if the inmate would happen to get it, it could disable it, almost like if you're in your boat, and you know the thing that hooks to the, I don't even know what it is, 'cause I'm not a boat, but, you know, if you fall out your boat, the little cord that rips off to where it doesn't work. Our jailers have those. That way, if they were to get into a fight and lose their taser, you know, the inmates couldn't get it. So, I believe, Mayor, that that's the ones we're looking at, but we haven't actually got that for yet.
Why would you need a camera on a taser if they have a body camera? Just 'cause I don't know.
To me, from what I've seen since I've been in the film, if you're helping with someone, this thing might be one way or the other. The car might be faced this way because you pulled up over here, but you're over here. It's just an extra.
Okay.
In today's police environment, you usually have a taser camera, a dash cam, a body cam, and 100 cellphone cameras. So, somebody's gonna get something, and there's always different versions of views, I guess you would say, when you get it. But it's just a replacement of the equipment that we have, and so we can stay up to date and actually supply our officers with the equipment. We need, they need to have to do their job.
Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Anyone here on this matter? Pleasure with the council.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Thank you, Charles. Number four, a resolution approving change order number three for Zimari Park Pool Renovation Project 11717 for an increase of $2,209.17 days. Chris Bankston.
Hi, Chris Bankston, guests with Bankston Architects. We're here tonight to request approval of a change order. We're gonna be adding a permanent ramp, handicap ramp, to the west side of the facility right now, which there is like a step down. And until all of the master plan parking, whatever gets into place, it looks like maybe the bulk of the people might be coming from that direction. So, we thought it'd probably be a good idea to add this ramp, just, and then it can be adjusted whenever they do the new parking or whatever in the future, so.
Is this within budget? Within the money that's there?
I can address that. We're gonna transfer the $2,209 from surplus funds. There's approximately 142, a little over 142,000 in surplus funds right now, because video bingo for the final end of the fiscal year came in much higher than, not much higher, but higher than anticipated in the budget. All of those funds, since those must be directed to capital projects, just go sit in that until the council appropriates them to capital projects. So, we'll have a full update in the next cycle of what is actually there, but there is plenty of money to cover this $2,209.
But it doesn't fit within the original budget of Zimari Park Pool.
That is correct.
We've used all of that money.
That is correct.
How far, how much over? Is this the first time we're over with this 2,000 charge, or there's some other over?
I believe this is the second one. I think, Chris, let me remember, was, or Charles, was the first one around 10,000?
There was one, it was a deductive change.
Yeah, there was a credit.
There was the deductive, and then there was an additive.
Yeah, the additive was the.
I wanna say overall, we're somewhere just around 10,000 to 12,000 for the whole.
Explain the deductive change, please, to the council.
Oh, I believe we had some, I think there was some waterproofing.
Yeah, and was that when we traded out the sewer versus the stormwater drainage for the overflow of the pool water?
Right, and then, right, so we got credit back on that, and then I think we got, I have to go back and look at what it was, but it was like one or two things. But I know one of the bigger ones was there was a waterproofing thing, it was sort of like a double dip thing, so, you know, we were painting it, and then there was waterproofing, so we said, no, let's take a credit on that, so we put that back. And that was part of the bulk of it.
I would say overall, for a project of this scope and magnitude, to be close to closing it out, and you've looked at somewhere between 10 and 12,000, overall is pretty remarkable.
Mr. Banks?
Yes, sir.
You say this for a handicap?
Yeah, it's a handicap ramp. It's like, what we had was like a, like a step down. It's handicap accessible, you can get to it from the other route, but we thought it might be a better, it might be a good idea to be able to come from both ways if somebody's gonna be coming from along the sidewalk next to the existing tennis courts.
So, this is an extra, this is an extra handicap?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a way, too. I mean, it's, the accessible routes there, you know, it's just that we thought this would probably be better for the community if there was another ramp, just in case somebody wanted to.
So, it's not needed, it's just something extra that we're doing.
This is, this is actually going to, so the main accessible route, wheelchair accessible route, is from Oak Street. So, there's gonna be a sidewalk about eight feet wide that you'll be able to use a wheelchair to get to the pool. What we're talking about here is on the other side, where the tennis courts are, there isn't currently a connection to the sidewalk around the tennis courts. And we anticipate that there'll be a large number of people who are coming from the interior of the park and/or from Coleman, and they'll be accessing the pool from the tennis court side. So, this is gonna be provide an accessible route for someone in the wheelchair to get to the tennis court from the interior of the park or from Coleman, as opposed to having to go all the way out to Oak Street.
I think one of the most important things, too, is that that, the tennis courts will be the new location for the parking lot, which is in this fiscal year. So, that's gonna be the main parking for the pool and for everything else in that portion of the park. We are thinking towards that, and so this handicap accessible ramp will come from that parking area into the pool area.
So, I'm sorry. So, this is a master plan, am I right?
That's correct.
Okay, so a master plan, 'cause I need help on it. I'm gonna tell you, I'm new, so I need help. So, a master plan, you only had one handicap ramp in the beginning?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, the original design didn't have this one, y'all are modifying and adding this one?
Correct, correct, right.
The master plan really lays out the larger assets. So, the master plan lays out where the parking lots will go, where the playgrounds will go, where the dog park will go. It doesn't necessarily get into the specifics of that connectivity between those assets, so how you will make your way from the dog park over to the playground and then over to the swimming pool. And what we're trying to do is build the most accessible ways throughout the park that we can. They took this opportunity in looking at the whole paths and whole different ways to the pool to upgrade this. It was gonna be considered when we did the parking lot, but now we're just taking care of it in this project.
Okay. The tennis court was used for the parking lot, gonna be used for the parking lot in the beginning, right?
That's correct. The tennis courts will be demolished and the parking lot will be installed.
So, in the process, what I'm saying is, we know the tennis court was gonna be used for parking, and now all of a sudden, I don't have no problem with it. I'm just asking, 'cause I need to know. That's all. I have no problem with it, but I just wanted to know why this wasn't included at first.
Eventually, I mean, it was gonna happen eventually, but when they start pouring the parking or whatever, there's different grades that it's gonna work to, and whoever gets that project will probably set a certain elevation. But we don't have that right now. So, for us to try to really work it in to that point and work with, specifically with that drive or that parking area, we don't have that information. But what we can do at this point now is, if it's gonna be down the line or whenever, we can address it now if, say, you know, when they open the pool up, if, until they get that parking, which I don't know when it's gonna happen, there'll be, it'll be able to be accessed from that side with a wheelchair. They can access it without it, but, I mean, you know, you'd have to have a wheelchair, you'd have to go back around, so.
The other, the other thing about this option, they presented us with several different options. This option will be permanent. We won't have to take this out and rebuild a ramp later if the elevations are different between the parking lot and the tennis courts and the pool. Basically, there'll be a way to connect sidewalk directly from the parking lot to this ramp without having to pull anything out.
Right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
So, in other words, what you're saying, that the parking lot is gonna feed right into the ramp?
There will be a sidewalk or something to the parking lot. I mean, the park, it won't be able, like, drive onto the sidewalk. There'll be separation.
Right, I understand, it's gonna feed right in, yeah.
They're gonna ensure that connectivity.
Y'all have a drawing of it or a ready design, or y'all just?
Of the parking lot?
Or not, the little added ramp?
Yes, I think it was, it was page four of the attachment. Here's a drawing.
You forgot to put in there.
Yes, thank you.
She likes playing tricks.
It's just a line drawing.
And I believe it was emailed, too, right?
Yeah.
So, if I'm not mistaken, the orientation there, you're kind of looking at it, the parking lot would be on the left-hand side, if I remember correctly.
Right.
And the pool would be on the right-hand side. So, what you see in that sort of speckled white is the existing, the pool concrete, and the gray is the addition. We're also adding some steps, too, so that if you, if you are coming from that direction and don't have a wheelchair, you'll be able to walk up the steps onto the main eight-foot wide path.
We changed, right, we changed the orientation of the steps. I mean, they were longer, but now we're gonna make them actual steps and.
Any other questions? Anyone here in the audience on this matter? Pleasure with the council.
I make a motion to approve?
Second.
Councilman DiViterio.
Aye.
Councilman Wales.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Final adoption of ordinance, number one, introduction of an ordinance declaring two Dodge Durango's movable property as surplus and not needed for a public purpose and providing for a donation to Tick Fall Police Department to benefit public safety. Janet Thurman.
Good evening. The police department has turned over two Dodge Durango's that they want a surplus, and pending approval, we're asking for permission to donate them to Tick Fall Police Department.
Any questions on the council?
Yeah, I have a question. Yeah, we was doing a budget meeting, and I had asked about a vehicle, using a vehicle, and Ms. Lacy told me they had two vehicles out there I can use. Well, when I went to get the vehicle, the mayor told me I couldn't use the vehicle. And now I'm looking, we about to get two vehicles away, and I still haven't found a[1539.87] And now I'm looking, we about to get two vehicles away, and I still haven't found a vehicle that I can use just to conduct city business, nothing against you, ma'am.
Well, as I said before, council can use a vehicle any time they want, if they wanna go on a convention trip, or they wanna take people around. For you to pass up Chuck's office to do business with Chuck, to come get a vehicle, to go back to him, or to go where your other, you're gonna go to Andre.
Andre.
To do regular business like that, I don't see any need for a council member to be taking a city vehicle to run around City of Hammond.
Okay.
So, but if you wanna go out of town, or you wanna take a tour?
No, I don't need no vehicle to go out of town. I got a vehicle to go out of town. Then a lot of times, I'm gonna ride the airplane anyway. But it wasn't said during the meeting when I asked about the vehicle, but because I didn't know all of this. If I would've knew all of that at the time, when we was doing the budget, I would've fixed it in the budget, why wouldn't have had this problem?
I think you asked, and I think Lacy did say that you could use one of the vehicles, if you needed a vehicle at the city. I did remember that, yeah.
Yeah, I think we just weren't expecting it to be for day-to-day use. The way that the city employees use the vehicles is the same way. They, we use them for out-of-state, you know, or out-of-town travel, to move large things that we're moving from one city building to another city building, such as IT equipment, or chairs, or tables, and then to take multiple people to a site when that's required. So I guess, I apologize, because it was probably just my misperception of what your intent was versus how we normally use those vehicles.
No, I think I made it very clear that I needed the vehicle for the district, to use in the district. I made it very clear, but I understand now, but for the future, and that's why, by me being new, I need you to explain everything to me. Well, I won't have none of these problems later on, because like right now, whenever somebody come up and ask it for money and for grants, I'm sitting here saying, yes, I'm voting yes for everything. And then when I ask something about the park, nobody talking. You know, you real quiet. And I'm tired of having these little meets behind closed doors, this and that, you know. I need all this, I'm in the front. Everybody can hear what I'm saying. I have nothing to hide, but I need you to be straight with me from this point on, dealing with the city for everything.
When you came to get that vehicle, I explained that to you when you were in that office.
Oh, no, the vehicle, I'm through with the vehicle.
When we talk about your park, you've already changed the master plan twice, and that's fine. So I don't know what the issue is with Mooney Park, because we're gonna do whatever we can do and whatever you wanna do there, but we need to have the plan in place. The plan's changed twice, it could change a third time. But we need to know what you want. You're changing the parking along the sides of the road, which is there anyway, we're just making it asphalt. Apparently, you're changing that. So we just need to get on the same page and figure out what you really wanna do with Mooney Park.
No, the parking, when he come to me talking about the parking.
Who's he?
Mr. Chuck. I'm glad you said that. And Mr. Chuck Spangler come to me talking about the parking. He wanted to put the parking where they been having killings at in the park, in that area, in the back of the park. And I told him I didn't think that was a good idea, because what we did, it just had a block party over there, and what you had, you had a lot of hooplins over there in that area. And so I didn't wanna add no parking for them to sit over there 24/7. That's why I told him, no, let's not do that. I don't think that's a good idea.
And we're gonna change it, and we're gonna continue to change it.
So that's what I was saying. You know, it wasn't about me changing it, but it wasn't a good idea. Why work in the back of the park? You know, here we talking about Z-Mare, and when we talk about Z-Mare, you know what we talking about? The front of the park. When he talking about the back of Z-Mare, when we talk about Z-Mare, we talking about the front of the park. Don't come to me talking about the back of a park.
But we already have parking place in front of the park as well. We're trying to get as much parking so people can access all the parks as we can, with the land space that's there that can be used accordingly. So tell us what you want. They're using it anyway. They're parking there anyway. We put a light there for the trouble that they had there, the shooting that they had there in the back. Are they still in the park there? Do you not want the park? If you don't want the park, then we won't put the park there. It just needs to be in the plan, just like Chris went through with the pool. If it's not in the plan, then we'll have to change it. So we're trying to get the plan like you want it for your park, so we can get in there and get the job done.
Well, you said they got a light back there, but guess what? The police had to go back there a couple weeks ago. All the police had to go back there.
But that's what the police do, man.
Okay.
All right. Okay?
I'm fine, thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments on this Dodge Durango surplus? Pleasure to counsel. Oh, I'm sorry, sure. Yes, please come up. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, Salvador Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West. I'm a kind of a guy that kind of moves around and do different things, and seem like we, the city has been doing a lot of things, and it's just, don't seem like it's getting communicated to the people that it should be communicated to. For instance, I have been in a little bit of the car business. I was a barber, cut hair for 40 years and all this. Now, this donation to Tick Fall, I don't understand that. We live in City of Hammond, we don't live in Tick Fall. I even talked to Ms. Dan, Dana, a couple times that I was supposed to go see her, and I haven't had the opportunity to buy these cars, or she runs them through the auction or something, is that correct? And I've asked you a couple times about maybe me inquiring about it, right? Unfortunately, I haven't had the opportunity to go give with her. I don't see any reason to give Tick Fall Police Department trucks for safety. I mean, maybe we could use it around Hammond a little bit more rather than give it to Tick Fall. For what reason, we donating it to Tick Fall?
These cars have been used to the fullest extent that we can use them.
Okay.
We can bring them out here, and we can sell them at an auction, or we can take a community that doesn't have an income like we're blessed to have in the City of Hammond, that needs police vehicles, and would be willing to take an old one that at least is running, and help them make their city safer. So the benefit of having them help their community get safe, or sell, make it a few dollars off of a car that you can resell, I think it's a really good benefit to help close community to have a vehicle.
Well, and I understand your opinion about that. But here again, we're talking about people around Hammond vicinity could use these trucks also. Even, I don't know how many miles is on them or anything like that, but personally, I'm not interested in making a big profit off of these little, you know, little cars and trucks. I'm just concerned because the City of Hammond should take care of City of Hammond, and Tick Fall's an entirely different program in my book.
How many miles do you have on them?
It does not own their, roughly 80,000.
I believe they're at least 80,000. They were assigned to the traffic unit, we required us having motorcycles. So the cars are probably in pretty bad shape, per se. The only thing I would say, and it kind of the mayor touched on it, as far as us giving to other agencies that are smaller, the only people that know jurisdictional lines are the police and politicians. The criminals don't. We work with Tick Fall on a daily basis. We work with AB, we work with independents throughout the whole parish. I mean, it's, everybody works together. These aren't top-of-the-line vehicles by any means. They're probably on their last leg and have been out to the barn many, many times, and the expense for us to maintain them ends up being pretty expensive. Unfortunately, the small agencies don't have that option to have their own maintenance facility or something like that. They'll take a car like this, and I know Kip, you've seen it for years in law enforcement, they'll run it as long as they could possibly run it with Band-Aids and duct tape and hope that it lasts. So I think it definitely benefits us to have that working relationship with neighboring agencies.
So do we have a year, is there a year in this binder? 2009, 80,000 miles, you said?
80,000 is not like a regular citizen's vehicle ride, that's 80,000 horsepower, you know, excess 60 miles per hour, speed right when you take off, you know, transmissions go out in a long time. It is, they go out, so you have to replace them. It's not a normal.
We have an estimated value on them, what they're worth?
I looked at the last Dodge Durango that we sold on Gov. Deals. Because it's a Dodge, we average 500 to $1,000 tops that we're gonna get if we sell. So, I mean, if we cannot donate to anybody else, we can only donate to other agencies. So I think it's admirable of the mayor to help other agencies.
And just on a personal note, when Dodge decided back then to get into the whole police world, and police car world, they put out these Durangos, and unfortunately, they probably weren't the best vehicles. I mean, you could have a Crown Vic that you can't kill, and you get a Dodge Durango, even in a personal car, and I know you've dealt with cars, and you know it, those Dodge Durangos just don't hold their value, they don't have much value to them, and that's kind of the bottom of our fleet, and the ones that are just to the point to where we need to probably get rid of them one way or the other.
And Sal, to your credit, I mean, it's.
I'm sorry?
To your credit, you know, that's why you are able to come up here and say your opinion, it's really.
Well, yeah, and, you know.
Some of the counties decide what they wanna do.
Sometimes the vehicles, you know, like you said, 80,000 miles is not a lot, but if it's hard ridden and being a Dodge, I mean, number one, that's not the best vehicle to buy anyway. But here again, like you said, it's up to the council to decide what they wanna do with it. I just didn't know the issue that Mr. Wells had, you know, and I was just trying to get it clear in my mind, too, you know, what was going on. Thank y'all, council.
Thank you, sir.
Janet, the 500 to $1,000 that the city might earn, that's our takeaway from this, but that's not what an individual person would purchase to get the vehicle, right?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to understand.
Because they're gonna pay those other fees on the deals and whatnot.
Yes, they pay Gov. Deal fees and all that. I think it's an increase of, it's not really that much. I think it's seven to 10%. So obviously, maybe on the 500, they pay maybe 70 something dollars, and a thousand, they pay in 100 something dollars. It's not that much. Like I said, for what the city makes off of it and to benefit another agency, like I said, I think the mayor's admirable for doing it.
Sure could've paid for that handicap ramp, I tell you this.
It could help.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions or comments? Pleasure to counsel.
Motion to approve.
This is public, isn't it?
Oh, yes, sorry, motion to introduce.
Motion to introduce, I'm sorry.
Second.
Thank you, Janet. Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Diviterio?
Aye.
Councilman Wells?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce public hearing is set for August 27, 2019.
Number two, an introduction of an ordinance to reconsider the rezoning request by Jamestown Properties LLC to rezone 16 lots, 9A through 16B of the Hundred Oaks subdivision located on Fern Street from RS 11 to RS 5, in accordance with survey by Brett J. Martin dated 4/18/2019. Recommended approval by zoning commission previously denied by the city council. I had this added back to the agenda after talking to Ms. Lee, the council for Jamestown, because there were some questions of whether all the information was considered, and so I thought it would be a good idea to have this brought back before us to discuss whether we want to rehear it, and if there's anything that we need to know in order to rehear it. So, Ms. Lee, if you want to address us.
Good evening. Jennifer Lee, representative for Jamestown Properties LLC. Earlier this year, in about February, we started a process of trying to rezone the property located on Old Covington Highway, known as Hundred Oaks subdivision, from RS 11 to RS 5. And that property originally was 16 lots in total, eight lots on Easy Street and eight lots on Fern Street. And as we went through the process with the Planning and Zoning Commission, we heard from neighbors, surrounding neighbors, and one property owner who had actually bought in Hundred Oaks subdivision. And at some point, we accepted all that feedback from that neighbor and then from surrounding neighbors, and we'd actually changed the plans. So we no longer tried to change the lot size on Easy Street. We instead changed the lot size, wanted, proposed changing the lot size on Fern Street. And what, we finalized that process, met with neighbors, I think resolved all the issues with the neighbors, and then went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of that rezoning, and the city planner recommended rezoning of that. We then came before the city council, and I think there was some misunderstanding about information, maybe that we had not provided all the information, or the city council did not have all the information to review in making its decision to deny the rezoning request. And for that reason, we would ask that you introduce an ordinance to reconsider that application, so that we can fully present all of the information to you that may be missing.
I wanted to ask you, who thought that we, or asked you that we did not understand what was, or wasn't given all the information? That somebody, you said somebody requested that maybe we need to, you know, look at the information again, because we didn't have all the information? Who told you that, or where did that come from?
That was a follow-up conversation after the last meeting, and there was question about the report, the staff report that was presented from Planning and Zoning Commission. And I think there was some misunderstanding as to who does what, as to the Planning and Zoning Commission typically completes its report, gives it to the city council, and there are questions on there that are posed for the city council to answer. I believe that historically, that's been the process, and I believe it was the understanding that the Planning and Zoning Commission should have answered those questions, instead of leaving them blank for the city council to address, and on that basis, it was denied.
I'll answer that question. I was the person who said that on page two of the report that we're given, how there's these blank questions and no one has given us the answer to them. And I was told by one person that those are questions we have to answer, which I didn't know. And then now, you're saying it's for the Planning and Zoning to answer, which I don't know the answer to that. So that's part of that question to your question, that was me that said that.
And I think it was, it's been historically the city council. The Planning and Zoning poses it.
Okay, both bodies? Tracy.
I could, I could.
Right.
Tracy, please, the Planning and Zoning. Typically, the zoning commission looks at those questions and takes those in consideration to make the recommendation to send to the council. Ultimately, the decision is the council's decision, so they should also look at those questions and make those determinations based on their decision of approval or denial.
So has anything changed from the original submission, what, two months ago this came? Has anything changed as far as the rezoning or the modifications that are being asked to be made?
Nothing has changed.
Same, same, okay.
Same request.
So did the buyer that's doing this, did he do his due diligence inspections before he bought it, knowing that it was like it was whenever he bought it, or?
What do you mean?
I mean, obviously, if he purchased it like it is now, he knew that going into it, correct?
That the zoning is what it was, what it was when he bought it?
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Yeah, what I'm asking is, whenever he, whoever it was purchased it, they knew that the lots were 100 feet wide, and now they're trying to go 50 feet, correct?
He purchased the property at the end of last year, and the property has been sitting for 20 years, and one lot has been sold. And in the neighborhood, in the area, apparently, that's just not any, you know, a marketable size. So the intention was to put the lots, to put the subdivision back in commerce and build on lot sizes that could sell.
Okay.
So from my understanding, the original report that was given then, to this date, is still the same?
I don't believe the report has changed. I believe that the city council maybe was looking for more information in that report, and maybe the Planning and Zoning Commission thought it had provided adequate information, and there may have been a misunderstanding. Ms. Gonzalez, is that your?
Do you have any other things to provide to us before, if this were to pass tonight, and we were to rehear it next meeting? Are there any things in addition?
Yeah, I mean, I can provide more information, yes.
But you would want to know specifically what we are looking for?
I can provide some information. You do not have to provide a list. That would be very helpful if you had specific concerns and specific questions to address. I would love to get information for you and address those, and I will also work to get other information for you.
And this is simply an introduction, right?
Yes, this is just introduction. I have been vocal in saying to anyone who's asked me why, I voted to deny this, because I went to all of the planning and zoning meetings when this, when these, every time they had the request, and it kept getting pushed, and every time there were less and less residents that showed up, because people don't show up multiple times as things get pushed. And I had people from that area call me into the lobby and say, this isn't true, that's not true, we don't want this. And those people didn't show up for the last hearing, and I'm hopeful, if this passes, that I can get more insight from the people in the area. That matters to me.
And I would welcome hearing that as well. I believe that there may have been less and less showing up, because we worked diligently with neighbors to resolve these issues and change some plans, and that is our opinion as to why less and less people may have shown up. But I also, maybe that is the case, that as it's changed, some people have, you know, the schedules changed and they may not come. So all we're asking is for an opportunity to present this again, you can advertise this again, for people to come, you know, voice any questions, comments, and for the council to reconsider this rezoning request.
So, yeah, so nothing has changed? Same thing, just bringing back up again from the two months ago, and wanting to make sure that we understood what we were denying or not.
Except that I will provide more information this time, because I believe, as has happened in the past, if the council kind of addresses those questions and asks, I will make sure that the information's provided in advance to the council. So that will be different.
We have a questions from the council? I know we have someone in the public. Okay. Go ahead. You can come up.
Salvador Nicolosi, 3607 Highway 190 West, Hammond. On this introduction, I'm looking at 16 lots. I'm trying to figure out what are the lot sizes, or, I mean, I don't have all the information, number one, but I see the council had turned it down first. So are they trying to make the lot smaller? And where is this location at, number one?
This is right next to Forbes Farm, off of Fern, Fern Street. So you have Old Covington, you turn left onto Fern. It's all of those vacant, all that vacant area right there to the left. On the right is Forbes Farm, on the left are the vacant lots. They're zoned as 100-foot lots right now, and they're asking to change that rezoning to RS 5, which would be a minimum of 50-foot lots, basically doubling the amount of lots there.
Well, as a owner and property and all, I've also requested certain things from the zoning commission for probably 15, 20 years, and it's really been giving me a little bit of a hard time, and I'm not in favor of anybody taking 16 lots and making them 50, when I had to keep my lots at 100, you know, 100-foot wide by 150.
It is, just so, just to be clear, it's eight lots to turn into 16.
Okay, all right, I got you.
Cutting 100 to 50-foot, turning from eight lots to 16 lots, yeah. Yeah, I think you said it right, yeah.
Well, I'm just, that's basically what I'm trying to say. If you're doubling your lots, you're gonna have smaller lots, and so that means you're gonna be a lot more jam-packed, and I'm just not in favor of that in the city, you know. I mean, I noticed in the city limits on Forbes, I'm not too familiar with that area, but I know the area I live in, the lots are normally 90, about 100-foot, you know, front with 150 deep. So I would just take into consideration that, your neighbors being, unless you're gonna be building condominiums, townhouses, or whatever, I don't know what the, I don't know who James, James Properties are anyway. know who James, James Properties are anyway. I mean, do y'all, do y'all, are y'all aware of who these people are?
It's me.
I'm sorry?
Robert Moran. I'm Jamestown.
Oh, okay. Well.
Yes, sir.
Welcome. Come on up. Salvador Nicolosi.
Nice to meet you, Mr. Nicolosi.
You too.
Hello. I'm just trying to take this piece of land that's been sitting there for 20 years, 25 years. I'm trying to subdivide it into 50-foot lots, just like all the other subdivisions around there, the smaller subdivisions, and to put smaller houses on it itself of 175 to 200,000.
Which one are you referring to when you say other subdivisions around there, 50-foot lots?
Scott Sandy's built a subdivision on Range Road just south of there. Bobby Tallow had a subdivision just south of there. Similar kind of houses. Darrell Smith's got a subdivision off of Holly Street, some kind of house.
I don't think they're 50-foot lots.
Yeah, I think they're 50.
I don't think, yeah.
I think they're 50-foot lots, yeah. So that's kind of the market around there right now. This deal has not worked. I mean, these 100-foot lots, nobody wants to buy a 100-foot lot and put a $300,000 house on it. So you've got one house on 16 lots. It's been there for 25 years. So anyway, if y'all can help us, I certainly would appreciate it.
Again, we're just at this point requesting that we have additional information that we will introduce. We'll make sure that you have adequate information, and we're asking that the council please introduce an ordinance to reconsider the rezoning request.
I, I do have, I have a question myself.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, I don't even know who to address this to. Once again, this is my first time being a councilman. Anytime something be denied, are we gonna go through this here over and over again? Who I ask the question to?
That's the council's prerogative. That's why it comes before you. It's your choice.
Okay, so, so every time something be denied, because what I'm looking at, I'm just gonna go and get to it. What I'm looking at, when blacks be denied, are they gonna be able to come back up here, and we're gonna redo it again for them and approve them? I mean, that's what I need to know. Because what the.
You think there's not enough information that was given the first time? You think the information given or whatever questions weren't answered can be answered? Then, yeah, you introduce it?
Sure.
Because if it simply comes for introduction, you go to the next meeting. And between the two meetings, any questions you have that are answered or unanswered decides possibly your decision.
Okay.
At the next meeting.
Okay, well, what's going on?
So, yes.
Pretty much, everybody come up here, it's not enough information being given. I'm saying, everybody know we new. So in the process of being new, if everybody bring all the information to us, not on a Tuesday, not on a Monday night, bring us all the information. Because I think I talked to you yesterday.
Yes, sir, I called you, uh-huh.
Yeah, I talked to him yesterday.
Mm-hmm.
And the problem is, once you talk to me the day of or the day before, because I talked away, worked for Mr. Chuck, I talked to him today, and that'd be the biggest issue I have. I don't get the information in time. I know when the next city council meeting there, from this here day, gonna be two weeks from now. It seem like I'm the only one know that because I don't get the information until Tuesday or Monday. That's all I'm saying. Nothing against you all.
True.
I think we try to do the best we can with getting at least advance information. If, if you all remember, we set a resolution early in the year to ensure that all the items for the agenda and all the supporting documentation for those items would be given to the council by Thursday, close of business before Tuesday. Since that resolution was passed, every item that has come to you has been forwarded by email by that Thursday 4:30 deadline.
Okay, I'm, excuse me one minute.
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah.
I'm glad you said that, because I asked for the five last houses with demo through the city. Until this here day, I still haven't received all five houses with demo through the city. That, I'm glad you said it, through the emails. So through us talking, through me talking to you, through me talking to, to the mayor, through me talking to Mr. C.C., through me talking to Ms. Tracy, I'm saying, I, I do the talking and stuff, but I still haven't received the last five houses with the city had in demo and the cost of everything.
The ones that the city demolished, not that the owners demolished on their end?
No, ma'am. Just the last five houses.
We can have that for you tomorrow.
Got the cities.
Yes. This is the first I've heard of that request, so I can't help facilitate information if I don't know the request.
I, I think he was also, when he started off, was that about the denial process or voted on, you know, if, if it can, if some, if something's denied, and it's already denied, and the council's already made a decision on it, and then it's denied, and then it comes back two months later, you know, then to me, they should have some guidelines. I thought there was like one or two years, or, or is there a question that you may answer it, you know, to appeal a decision or try to re, re-bring it up to the council? Less than two years, it's like, okay, so if somebody's denied, then they can come back up next month and try to go ahead and put it back on there until maybe the council decides to change their mind or not change their mind.
To be clear, I think that the first time we've reheard something was actually an appeal from the historic district. That is a totally different process than this. And I am the one who put this back on the agenda for our consideration to rehear. Not that we have to rehear it. If we vote to rehear it, I mean, I gave us this option. I'll take full responsibility for being the person that put it back on the agenda for rehearing, quite honestly, so that we didn't get sued, okay?
And I would like to, I'm sorry, Mr. Cruz, I need to interrupt.
Well, to, to your question, an applicant cannot come back time and time again once they've been denied. There is a prohibition from that. This is the council considering whether the council wants to rehear the matter.
Okay.
The question was just that the council either had inaccurate or incomplete information.
Okay, so the coun, so the applicant, he could have not, or she could have not have came back and applied within less than two years.
Correct.
Less than two years.
Yes.
But if they ask the, the council to put it on the agenda and that it is approved, then therefore, it could come back again?
Yes, the council would have.
One we are zoning, I'm not sure about other, other. This one. And correct, I want to make it clear that the reason that we're coming before you asking for reconsideration is not an appeal of the denial or that we think the denial was wrong. It's that the information, the reasons that were given for the denial was that you didn't have the information, and that was maybe some miscommunication, communication that was not due to us and on our part. But we want to make sure that you have that going forward, and that's why we're requesting that you reconsider this, so that we can ensure that you have everything you need to make a decision.
Unless there's other questions, I'd like to call for a vote. Oh, yes, go ahead. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
My name, Ruben Evans, 600 Natural Street, Hammond, Louisiana. Now, I'm listening to what's going on. If I'm correct, they are trying to take eight lots and turn it into 16 lots?
Correct.
So they are trying to add additional houses?
That's correct.
All right. It's vacant, trying to add a subdivision. Now, I would say this, I moved to Hammond in January, and it was hard to find a, a place while I was here. Talked to a lot of people that go to college here because I do the comedy shows with them, and they say they would want to stay here, but it's not really, the real estate not really here. Now, I'm saying there's 16 different houses, which is 16 different families that might have a lot of kids or whatever, you know, it's more people adding to the city, more consumers. All I'm saying is, as a citizen, I would say, I think y'all should reconsider looking into that because it's adding more livable space. That's about it.
Thank you. All right. Pleasure of the council.
Motion to introduce?
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Wells.
No.
Councilman DiViterio.
No.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Motion approved to introduce public hearing set for August 27, 2019.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Make a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
All right. We'll give a second to Devon.